All right. Welcome to the Monday, February 24th, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have you all here with us this evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda for tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an amended meeting agenda, adding consideration of TR-20-09, Resolution to Create a Library Construction Oversight Committee, and a closed session to discuss acquisition of property and security items.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And we start the evening tonight with my representative from the Council of Governments. We're delighted to have Mr. Chuck Bean, who's the Executive Director of COG, with us this evening. COG, as you may know, at least members of the public, is a regional body in which Falls Church belongs that helps us work with local governments throughout the area and throughout the region to accomplish some really big things. And COG is a great assistance to Falls Church and our citizens in many ways. I think we're going to hear a few of them this evening. But, Mr. Bean, we thank you for your contributions to Falls Church and the region. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, Council members. Great to be with you all tonight. One way to expedite my presentation tonight would be to run a two-minute video. I think it's going to save us about 10 minutes. So, do you want to hit the video? We're to form COG, and we're still meeting today. The future of the region is our business, and collaboration is how we get there.
The Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments is a regional body that convenes elected officials from all over the Washington metropolitan area.
We all call it affectionately in this region COG. And then, as a Council of Governments, is a facilitator of regional opportunities.
I think if I were to try to describe COG in one word, it would be unifying.
Yes, COG is a forum for discussion, but I think we're also a forum for regional problem-solving. Coming through our doors are the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, the housing directors, transportation experts, environmental experts, making their cities and counties better and making the region a better place.
COG has something for everyone. If it's transportation, if it's environmental, if it's emergency preparedness and public safety, all of those things are things that COG addresses.
We're a very dynamic region, and that's what makes us a great place to live and work.
One of our major regional challenges, planning how we're going to accommodate an additional 1.5 billion people, and that is part of all of our work.
It's all about infrastructure. Your economy is based on how people get from place to place to trade goods and services.
The Transportation Planning Board, TPB, at COG has really been at the center of the region's efforts at improving transportation, promoting transportation efficiency.
COG staff are experts in their field. There are urban planners and civil engineers, even biologists and emergency management professionals.
It has been an invaluable opportunity for the city of Rockville. We have been able to access research, data, expertise, have conversations that we wouldn't have just on our own.
Whether you're the District of Columbia, you're Loudoun County, you're Charles County, everyone has a seat at the table.
Leading political figures in each of our jurisdictions are here on the COG board. And so, if you want to get something done, this is where you get things done.
Thank you. As I said, a video might even be more expeditious than my talking points here. So, that's the overview of COG. Maybe just a minute or two more on the COG 101 in our region, as the PowerPoint is coming up. Our region, about 5.7 million people in this footprint, about 3,600 square miles, 3.2 million jobs, about 2.1 million housing units. COG is a voluntary association, so Falls Church elects to be part of the Council of Governments. But COG also hosts the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, and that's a compulsory membership. I'll get more into the MPO in just a moment. Beyond elected officials that come through our doors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, 1,500 subject matter experts come through our doors discussing recycling, housing challenges, public safety, you name it. At the top of what we call the technical committees, these are the appointed officials, are the city and county managers, or the CAOs. Your own Wyatt Shields is a vice chair of the Regional CAO's Committee that meets on a monthly basis. Three independent boards are under our roof, so the COG Board of Directors, the TPB, or the Transportation Planning Board, MWAC, Air Quality Committee, and a number of policy and technical committees that I'll note in just a moment. And I think to hit the punchline, leadership from the Falls Church City Council punches way above its weight class in terms of making a regional impact through leadership on these committees, and I'll get to that in a moment. Little bit about COG as an organization, about 120 staff, $37 million budget, our largest areas in transportation planning, second in environmental programs, which includes air quality, also water quality, three types: drinking water security, wastewater management, stormwater management, community planning and services, and then homeland security and public safety. I mentioned COG is home to the MPO, also known as TPB. Any urbanized area, 50,000 people or more, must have a Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's how the federal guidelines and the federal funding work. As part of being part of an MPO, for any transportation project to receive federal funding, it must be part of that region's plan, as voted on by the local MPO, in this case, the Transportation Planning Board. Our regional plan is called Visualize 2045, and I'll give a few highlights of that in a moment. I'd say that the number-one priority of the COG Board over the last year, year and a half, has been meeting some of the housing challenges in our region. Before I get to these numbers, we see a connection between housing and transportation planning. And the overall thrust of our planning now is to bring housing closer to jobs. Better transportation outcomes, better housing, better housing outcomes. I mentioned there's 3.2 million jobs in our region. Outside of that footprint that I showed you earlier, approximately 325,000 people commute from outside of that footprint into those jobs. So, when I try to explain what those numbers mean to a neighbor, I say, "You might wonder, with 325,000 people schlepping in every day, there are going to be challenges coming from Hagerstown, or Fredericksburg, or Fakir County." So, we're looking to bring more of those housing units closer to jobs. After a year and a half of discernment with all of the planning directors of the region, all of the housing directors, supporting elected officials of the region, the COG Board unanimously set some targets for housing between 2020 and 2030. The first was the amount. We do the cooperative forecast for the region, so we forecast in the next 20, 25 years, the number of population, the number of jobs, the number of housing units. We forecast between 2020 and 2030 that 245,000 units would be created, based on cooperation with your planning, housing directors, and all the other jurisdictions in the region. But based on our analysis of the number of jobs, jobs increasing at a higher rate than housing, there was a shortfall. So, a target that an additional 75,000 units would need to be constructed in the footprint of the region over the next decade. And I mentioned the connection between housing and transportation. These additional housing units, rather than sprawl, or rather than an unplanned effort, they needed to go in the right places. And the right place is, from a transportation perspective, is what we've called for 20 years, regional activity centers, or near-high-capacity transit station areas, so 75% of that new housing. And then affordability, 75% of this new housing should be affordable to low- and middle-income households. As a region, we're evolving from saying affordable housing to talk about housing affordability. Housing affordability for nurses, for firefighters, for teachers, for the workers that we have in the region, and the workers that we expect over the next decade. So, that's a bit about what's been our major concern over the last year, housing. This transitions to our analytical focus this year, transit-oriented communities. I mentioned in the last slide that 75% of the housing should be in activity centers or near-high-capacity transit. Right now, we're undergoing an analysis of all the high-capacity transit station areas in the region. So, of course, this includes metro. Metro gets a lot of play, but also includes MARC and VRE, also includes the Purple Line under construction, and of course, Silver Line Phase II. It also includes Bus Rapid Transit. Bus Rapid Transit, not really on the region's radar screen at the beginning of this last decade, but I would say going to be very prominent over the next decade. Embark Richmond Highway is the manifestation of Bus Rapid Transit in Northern Virginia, Montgomery County. So, 200 nodes, 200 high-capacity transit areas is what we're analyzing, with particular focus on the walk shed first, so the half-mile radius, one can walk 10 minutes, so we've got to optimize the walk shed. A ring out is we're looking at micro-mobility. So, what can we observe about disruptions in transportation in the last several years? So, I'm going to mention scooters. A lot of people love or hate scooters, but there's something that's going to disrupt scooters over the next few years that's going to provide for micro-mobility. So, the way we're looking at it is, 10 minutes in transit-oriented development has really focused on the walk shed, that half-mile. But I often, I live in Arlington, I often ride on a e-bike, a jump bike, so I can get 1.8 miles in that same 10 minutes, get to the Metro Rail Station. So, the walk shed, micro-mobility, what might be coming in the next few years, and then micro-transit, and that is rethinking the bus. Do all buses need to be exactly this length? There's innovation happening, an example for in Montgomery County, around Flex Bus, 18-seater on-demand service, picks you up for $2, brings you to the Rockville Station. Other cities are looking at micro-transit. So, the walk shed, micro-mobility, micro-transit, that's what we're looking at in our analysis this year with the COG Board and the TPB. Another priority is around climate change and what we can do, what we need to do. Appreciate Mr. Z's chairmanship of COG's Climate, Energy, and Environment Policy Committee. Last month, bringing before the COG Board a mult, when I say region, I don't mean COG region in this instance, this is 12 state regions going from Virginia to Maine, called the Transportation and Climate Initiative. Governor Northam is on board, Mayor Bowser's on board, Governor Hogan. Governor Northam is bringing on the New General Assembly to look at this Transportation Climate Initiative, and the COG Board gave its endorsement. Expecting at the next COG Board meeting that we'll be back with a report out from the Climate, Energy, and Environment Policy Committee to forecast, foreshadow to the COG Board the potential adoption of CO2 reduction goals in this region by 2030. As it turns out, this region has set goals back more than a decade ago, up to 2020, and then out to 2050, but we do not set it for 2030. But the urgency of this initiative is going to, a presentation of the COG Board coming up next month with more consideration over the months to come, and the expected consideration of the COG Board to adopt those goals for the region this year. Racial equity has been a COG focus. We've been working with the CAOs, the city and county managers, Mr. Shields and others, and we developed a partnership with an entity called the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. We developed a cohort of 11 jurisdictions, 110 people, that are going through a year-long program, maybe five to 15 people from each jurisdiction, learning what it might be to apply a racial equity lens to local government. Some notes specifically about the interaction between the Council of Governments and Falls Church. Falls Church has been the recipient of several grants through our organization in the area. And a grant program we call Transportation Alternatives Program, the WNOD Trail Master Plan, received a grant of $248,000 two years ago, and last year, the WNOD, again, a grant of $274,000. We have another grant program called TLC, Transportation Land Use Connections Program, and I think 2020, so this must have just happened last month, award of a grant of $40,000 for residential parking standards, standard study. As a regional organization, there are a lot of messages that Falls Church, Arlington, as well as Montgomery, the district, Prince George's, want to be saying, and there's often consensus that we ought to be saying that together. As a result, the Council of Governments administers the Street Smart Program, which promotes safety for pedestrians and cyclists. We operate the Commuter Connections Program for the region, and part of Commuter Connections is a guaranteed ride-home program. A number of environmental campaigns, go recycle, protect your pipes, using tap-it drinking water. I probably should have added census, as we're looking to all be on the same page as the region and making sure that everyone's counted in the census. Turning to public safety and homeland security, we operate what's called the RIC system, Regional Incident Coordination and Communication System, a 24/7 text, phone, email system to help officials communicate during emergencies, and 18 Falls Church officials are registered to receive messages as part of RICs. Sometimes we need to get on the phone to understand what's the forecast for the morning rush, so we convene phone calls and include OPM, Office of Personnel Management, National Weather Service, D.M., V.M., et cetera, so everyone can get the same information about weather conditions, ground conditions, for the morning commute or the evening rush. Other areas that have benefited the region, computer-aided dispatch, interoperable communications, and we have a 911 Directors Committee. We've done symposiums on complex coordinated attacks, et cetera. One often overlooked program is our volume buying and cooperative purchasing, so I'm aware that Falls Church participates in our fuel and diesel program, and I don't have the exact number of how much dollars have been saved for Falls Church, but I can be happy to get that to you. Contracts on lighting, public access, bleeding control kits. We have a number of other contracts that are open, and I'd be happy to follow up with Mr. Shields or others on these details. Part of the buying power is it's not just our region, but we partner up with the Baltimore COG to get higher volume purchasing. So, opportunities to get involved. Falls Church is already thoroughly involved, Mayor Tarter on the Board of Directors, and Councilmember Snyder with TPB, and having chaired MWAC. I mentioned Councilmember Z, chairing Climate, Energy, and Environment Policy Committee, and I think active with the Chesapeake Bay Water Resources Policy Committee. A number of you have been active with the Human Services Policy Committee, and Vice Mayor Connolly and her leadership of the region Forward Coalition. So, thank you for indulging me so much time of many things that you might already have known, but appreciate the opportunity to come out here once in a while to share at least COG's perspective on some regional issues and some of the ways that we're connecting with the city of Falls Church. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. And COG does so much. That was a great presentation, and I think many of us are familiar with your great work firsthand, Vice Mayor Connolly, as you just mentioned, Chair of the Region Forward, Mr. Z, Climate, Energy, Mr. Snyder as well, Emergency Preparedness and the like. So, an awful lot, I think, comes back to Falls Church, and we're delighted to be part of the organization. Does anyone have any comments or questions? We've got Mr. Bean with us. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you, Mr. Bean, for all the work that you do on behalf of NOC, but also for all of its participating jurisdictions. None of this happens by itself, and it's the dedicated work of you and the staff at COG that make it possible for us to share in the region and take advantage of the benefits it gives us. And my goodness, if you have more committees to serve, I think we're going to have to expand the council up here to maybe nine members. Thank you so much.
Anything else, Mr. Snyder?
I'd just like to indicate that, you know, emergencies, weather, and climate change doesn't respect jurisdictional boundaries, and the work that I think COG does is absolutely fundamental to the welfare of this region. So, I want to thank you and all the other people who are active. The city and city council have long had a commitment to regionalism, and the Council of Governments is a classic way in which we demonstrate that each and every day. And as you said, it also has very direct benefits to our city. So, thanks much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bean, thank you so much for coming out, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you very soon.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yours as well. All right. Let's move on. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
I don't think, is anybody here for an oath? Nope. No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the receipt of public comments. Why don't you start with written comments? And I tell you, before we get too far along the pike, I know we've got a few folks here on South Lee and South Oak, and I believe Mr. Shields, the city manager, has a brief update he might give that might be of benefit to the folks who might be speaking shortly. Is there anything, Mr. Shields, you might want to add before folks get up to let them know what's happening city-wise on that area?
Well, thank you, Mayor Tarter, and I would just first like to thank those who've shown up tonight to speak about traffic calming on South Oak and South Lee Street. And I would just note a few things. We have received the petition for traffic calming, and so this is an application that is in process. And we have, whenever we get an application like this, or when we hear from neighbors, we do dispatch the police just to have a higher visibility in that neighborhood, and so that is happening, and hopefully you are seeing some of that, and will continue that. We've also initiated the traffic, the data collection process, which is the first step that we undertake when we receive a petition. And I would just note that, you know, as we go through this process, staff does want to work with the neighborhood, and there are things that we can do more quickly that are in the nature of sort of low-cost solutions that can make a difference with respect to the way that drivers approach the street and the speed on which they travel down the street. But what the process will also be is not just those sort of quick solutions that we will try to work with you on, but ultimately, things that are potentially more transformative for the street in terms of how drivers interact with the street, in terms of narrowing it down, speed humps, those types of what we call heavier solutions. We do need to go through a design process with you on that, and we also, you know, that will take a little bit more time for those heavier solutions. It is very loud and clear from the city council's perspective that working through these neighborhood traffic calming issues is a priority for the city council. The city council has recently appropriated funds for that purpose with a budget amendment that was adopted two weeks ago. Those were to clear the queue of projects that had already gone through the conceptual planning process with the neighbors, and we will be proceeding with construction on those projects, but you are now in process. I know there's history behind these issues as well, that South Lee has been through the CACT process, I think, about 10 years ago, and I recall that, and many of you may as well. We did make some changes at that time, but I think it's time to reengage on these issues. So, that's just a few notes up front. Cindy Mester is helping to coordinate amongst our engineer, Zach Bradley, who will be working with you on this, and Jeff Sykes, who is our staff lead for the NTC. But Cindy is the deputy city manager, also can be helpful to you in just making sure that the communication is there and that everybody understands the process and that we engage together on solutions. So, just a few comments up front, but we look forward to hearing what you have to say tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and start, I guess, with summary of written comments?
Yes. The following public comment was received. Mr. Gene Grusko of 120 North Fairfax Street requested tax relief in the FY21 budget. We had eight comments for traffic calming on South Oak and South Lee Streets. We had seven comments expressing concerns about regrading plans for the WNOD Dual Trails Project. Andrew Reeves of 707 Berry Street asked council to constrain expenditures, beginning with the budget amendment being considered tonight. Katie Neamy asked that council ask parents to attest that their firearms are safely stored. Sean Dakin sent an article against dog parks. John Tepperman sent an article favoring electric trash trucks. Vipas shared comments and concerns about freestanding accessory dwelling units being built to provide affordable housing. And the CACT wrote to support the school health and wellness committee's request for a plan for safe-walking and biking routes to the high school campus.
All right. Thank you very much. So, now we're going to move on to the receipt of public comment. That's from you all in the audience. I have some speaker slips that folks have printed out or filled out previously. If you did not fill out a speaker slip and you would like to speak in the hallway outside of this room, there are speaker slips. You fill them out, hand them to the clerk, who's right there. The clerk in turn will hand them to me. If you could, when you speak, keep your comments to three minutes so we can get through everyone and have an efficient meeting tonight, and everyone can get a turn. The lights on the top of the speaker dais, or whatever you call that, will go yellow when you have a minute left, right, a minute, 30 seconds, and they'll go red when your time is up. And we would ask that you please be considerate of others when your time is up, even if you haven't totally finished your comments, to just go ahead and let others speak. If you would like, you prefer to speak on the matter you're here for, to speak later, you're welcome to just ask that you be called at that time. I'm happy to do that. So, let me go ahead and start with the first speaker. Our first speaker is Erin Hopewell, followed by Michael Chase.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Erin Hopewell, and I live at 211 South Lee Street. I'm here to speak to our urgent request for safer streets for pedestrians and cars alike on South Lee Street and South Oak Street. First, thank you, city council members, for your sincere attention to our plight and for supporting our request for traffic calming and sidewalks. We know you understand the realities we face, our lack of sidewalks, crosswalks, stop signs, street signage, road paint, and anything to slow cars down. These are all known issues to council and city staff. We have completed the neighborhood traffic calming petition, and we are anxiously awaiting action. What I didn't understand until recently, and what I'd like to share with you tonight, is the long history of this issue. As we gathered petition signatures, every neighbor had a story to share about their near misses with speeding cars, or the shocking number of parked cars, and even two houses that have been struck by speeding cars and are careless drivers. I was dismayed to hear about the empty promises and bad excuses made in years past. My takeaway is that many folks who have lived in our neighborhood have felt defeated, like their voices would never be heard, and that change would not come. They were resigned to cars speeding up and down our streets, putting people and property in harm's way. But we are all here, in person and in spirit, because we are not defeated, and we remain passionate that change and safer streets are within our grasp. I am reminded of the importance of our efforts every school day when I walk my daughter to the bus without the safety of a sidewalk, and cross the Oak Street intersection to the bus stop without the safety of a three-way stop sign, or even a crosswalk. We are now finally being heard. Thank you. My request tonight is for transparency and action. We received the email from Cindy Meister on Sunday, for which we are grateful. She talked about the traffic analysis and administrative safety options. We would like to know when we will be able to review the data. When can we meet with staff to have a discussion about solutions? When can we expect to see solutions implemented? And what else can we do to ensure measures are taken to improve the safety of South Lee and South Oak Streets? We are willing to do whatever it takes. Thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Chase, followed by Franklin Wood. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Chase. I live at 208 South Oak. I come to speak on the matter of traffic calming on South Lee and South Oak as a father of two young boys, the oldest of which will be wanting to roam the neighborhood by himself in just a few short years. The recent spate of accidents on both Lee and Oak has prompted my neighbors and I to take this opportunity to address the council. I hope that in bringing this matter up now, something may be done to address the issue now for my neighbors, and in the future for when my child starts on his own, visiting the many great anomalies that the little city has to offer its younger citizens. I believe that any mitigation strategy should address both should address both South Oak and South Lee together, as they seem to have the same root cause and operate as an integrated traffic system. I believe the root cause of this issue is human nature. Both Lee and Oak have steep hill in the middle of the block with long straight sections of road. Both situations have run-up areas that allow cars to speed up to take the hill with momentum and allow it to coast downhill without braking. While there are several ways to address this issue, in my communication with my neighbors, there have been two that have stood out. We would like to have a sidewalk connection from South Lee to South Oak. We would also like to have a three-way stop at South Oak and South Lee. There are other mitigation strategies came to mind as I thought about this issue. Some of these are low-cost, low-effort. Some would require the resources of the CIP. All of these can be used singularly or together, and loosely ranked in the order of cost. One is to remove the no parking on the west side of South Oak around Hillier. Painted center lines at the top of the hill. Painted parking stalls along the side of the road. Speed bumps, humps, or tables. Bump-out sidewalks at road intersections, including the entrance to the cul-de-sac on South Lee. A center traffic island at the tops of the hills. Curb bump-outs at alternating sides of the road. The other option that we might consider is to make Oak Street one-way along the entire frontage of the school. I believe the root cause of this issue is on South Lee and Oak is a human issue, and I believe we can address it with human nature-based solutions. While there is no silver bullet that will eliminate all risk, I hope that we can take steps now and in the immediate future to minimize the risk while we're still talking about personal property losses, not personal injury ones. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Franklin Wood, followed by Liz Claw. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Franklin Wood. I live at 421 Rollins Street. We have a parking problem on the street. We've tried to address this in the past with the filling out of the restricted parking request form, and it turns out that the rule requires the entire block to participate. And unfortunately, it's... The problem only exists at the last... At the end of the street where the last four homes are. My next-door neighbor, Liz Claw, has a synopsis that she wants to run through. I thought she would actually come up here first. But, my next-door neighbor, George Lee, and her next-door neighbor, Catherine Smith, are all on board with the idea of asking you to look for some flexibility in the rule that requires all of us on the street to sign the same petition, or 75% of us, anyway, because the parking problem exists only at our end because of the Lee Crest... Lee Garden Apartments immediately adjacent to the end of Rollins Street. So, the first houses that are affected are the four at the end of the street. We've tried to address this before, I think, 12, 13 years ago, when we did have everybody on the street sign the petition. And for some reason, in spite of that, there was no rule passed to restrict the parking. And we'd like to find out why, and what can be done to alleviate the pressure on the homes at that end of the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Liz Claw. Followed by Mr. Brangman.
Hi, I'm Liz Claw, and Frank and I were... Came today because we have this intermittent, but increasingly persistent parking problem. We've tried a few measures to try to resolve this before coming and speaking with you, but we haven't been successful in finding resolution. So, Rollins Street is the first street after Winter Hill. We're a dead end. We've got houses on one side of the street. The houses predominantly have one-car driveways and two spaces in front. Most of the houses have two cars, so one car in the driveway, one car on the street, one car for a guest. The problem is, if you flip over the map we've written on the backside, you'll see at the very end of the street, 425 has no street parking. 423 has one space and a fire hydrant, and then 421 and 419 both have two spaces. If it were just up to the four families, we'd be able to sort out those five spaces no problem whatsoever. But, the residents over at the apartments and their guests have decided that our street parking looks really attractive. And so, now we have gotten to this point where we're essentially in daily competition to be able to park anywhere close to our homes. It's gotten pretty frustrating. And actually, in trying to solve this problem on our own, we learned that the apartments give away more parking passes than they have spaces available. And so, when I asked about that, they were like, "Oh, it's just not that big a deal. They just bleed into the neighborhood," which I was like, "Well, actually, that is kind of a problem." And so, now all we do is annoy our neighbors when we start parking up the street into the spots that they've been used to having for years. It's also horribly frustrating to know that if you're working late, it's unlikely that you're going to park anywhere near the house. We also feel that the problem has picked up in persistence since the Winter Hill, the purple stickers for them, went into effect. The ones that, like with the Harris teeter and that, I can't remember exactly what that... It's a zone. So, for us homeowners, we feel it's really an issue on the weekday evenings and on the weekends. We have some ideas for, you know, how to help ourselves out, but, you know, we've learned a little bit about the rulemaking. We just were hoping for a little bit of flexibility either in, as Frank mentioned, having the entire street have to... I think we can get people on board. But, at this point, we just are looking for a little bit of flexibility and trying to find a solution that doesn't have us walking all over the place. We have no overflow parking. So, comments or questions are... Would be really appreciated, and helping ease the burden from those last four houses. We'd really appreciate it, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you for yours. Our next speaker is Alan Brangman, followed by Stephen Higley. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, city staff. This actually feels pretty funny to be back here. Actually, I've never been back here. Great space. Really love it.
This is our former mayor, for those in the audience who don't know it, so...
This has been a great add to the city. I know that you guys are actually loving being in a space like this, and actually, the entire building, I think, works much better now than it did during the time when I was here. But, you still have great people on the council. You still have great city staff, and you still have great citizens in the city, as you can see from the folks who are here this evening. You've heard a number of comments already about traffic calming on South Oak and South Lee. I really can't add anything in terms of what we would like to see there, but I will add a few things with respect to history. Back in 2010, the city manager is correct, that we spent some time with the CACT, wrestling with the issues of traffic calming on South Oak primarily then, but also we spoke about South Lee as well. And I do want to thank the city at that point in time for adding the always stops at Parker and South Lee, at Timber Lane... Or, excuse me, Parker and South Oak, at Timber Lane and South Oak, and also at the intersection of Marshall and Seton and South Oak, where there previously were just two stop signs. There were also a number of stop signs that were added on Seton Lane, which helped to really slow traffic down a lot. Unfortunately, what we had asked for at that point in time was also for always stops at South Oak and South Lee. And truth be told, in full disclosure, my house is at the corner of South Oak and South Lee. But, I was not in office at that point in time. But, we do have what I think a lot of Falls Church is experiencing, and that is a complete changeover in our neighborhood. There are only three or four families that live in the South Oak/South Lee area now that were there back in the 1980s. And so, what happens now is like some of the folks who have spoken to you today, they've all got little kids, and they're doing one of two things. They're either going to Mount Daniel, or Mountain Daniel, as my kids used to call it, or they're going to Timber... To TJ, and the kids are walking. And Erin talked about the bus stop that's on South Oak right now to pick up the kids who are going to Mount Daniel. The kids coming from South Lee actually have to cross the street without a crosswalk. And when they unload in the afternoon, they have to cross back across South Oak without a crosswalk. If the three-way stop had been put at South Oak and South Lee, that would have helped things. But, I would argue, one of the solutions might be to have a raised crosswalk at South Oak and South Lee. There's already a curb cut there, but it dumps you right into the street. And I've also watched the children as they come from Timber Lane coming home, and coming home from TJ. They walk on the east side of South Oak Street, and when they get to that corner, they cross the street. No crosswalk, because there's no sidewalk on the east side of South Oak. It's only on the west side of South Oak. The other thing that we were told when we went through that study is that we asked for speed humps. We asked for speed tables. We were told that the city doesn't do speed humps on hills. I would challenge you to ride around the city of Falls Church and look where we have installed speed humps. And actually, you could just go right up Marshall, West Marshall, because there were two new speed humps that were installed on that street, one of which is right in the middle of the hill. So, if they can have it on that hill, or they can have it on other hills around the city. Columbia is another one that has it on a hill. There are a number of other streets as well. I would argue, given the fact that we have an elementary school in our neighborhood, we ought to have the most drastic interventions for calming traffic as we can. So, yeah, you guys are beating me. I get it.
We didn't have those when you were here, did we?
Did not happen, no. The other thing, we looked at very quickly, and again, offering solutions, and I won't say that this would absolutely work, but Arlington put in a number of traffic circles on a number of residential streets. And that might also be something that could happen at that South Lee/South Oak intersection as a possibility. The key here, though, is I heard, and thank you, Wyatt, for the update on what the city's doing. I heard that you say that you want to include the community in the discussions about what goes on with the solutions that happen here. I encourage you to do that. I really don't want to have to go through a study again. We did it 10 years ago. We know what the problems are. I think we ought to move forward in order to fix some of the issues that we've got there. And I have resorted to parking in my driveway all the time now, because I'm not looking to have to go through insurance claims on my car, because it's getting banged into either on South Oak or South Lee. Neither of those streets right now are safe. So, please, take to heart what we're speaking about here. It is a major concern, and we do and hope that you will help us fix the problems that we've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the community. Our last speaker, at this point at least, is Stephen Higley. Welcome.
Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Connolly, it's great to be here with you this evening. It was great to see so many of you a couple months ago at our holiday concert. My name is Steve Higley. I represent the Washington Symphony. We're an orchestra based in Falls Church, and I'm here tonight to talk about the Arts and Humanities Grant Awards Program, and what an important catalyst that is for the arts in this community. The Washington Symphony is the only orchestra based in Falls Church. Many of our members are professionally-trained musicians. All of us are volunteers, dedicating our time and our talents toward bringing performances of classical music masterpieces to our audiences at the Falls Church Episcopal. We're very grateful for the grant support that we've received over the past few years, particularly as this support allows us to offer our annual holiday concert, a very popular event, as you all know, free of charge to the public. However, this grant support does not come close to meeting the Symphony's annual operating costs, which include expenses like venue rental for rehearsals and performances, music purchases, paid extra musicians, and the like. We know that the value we bring to this community through our performances and the continuation of classical music heritage far exceeds our modest operating budget. Yet, like many nonprofit arts organizations, we face budget challenges each year. Unfortunately, this past year, we did not receive the full amount of our Arts and Humanities grant requests, and neither did several other applicants. Following a year in which the city of Falls Church held a $2.5 million surplus over fiscal year 2019, we feel that this represents a lost opportunity for the city to have fully invested in the arts and cultural programs that are such a valued part of this community. The most recent economic study by the organization Americans for the Arts, titled Arts and Economic Prosperity 5, finds that nationally, the nonprofit arts and cultural industry generates more than $160 billion in economic activity every year. Almost two-thirds of this is through event-related activity. To quote the report, "Event-related spending by arts audiences generates valuable revenue for local merchants, such as restaurants, retail stores, and hotels." In short, what the Symphony and other arts organizations bring to Falls Church isn't just cultural enrichment, it's also economic opportunity. I would like to submit a copy of the Arts and Economic Prosperity study for the record. I also submit a letter, signed together with the Tinnerhill Foundation, requesting that the city substantially increase its funding for the Arts and Humanities Grants Program for FY 2021 and future years, over the $45,000 that was appropriated last year. The Arts and Humanities Grants Program represents a tremendous opportunity for the city of Falls Church to invest in its arts and cultural heritage. Our community will reap the rewards of that investment now and for many years to come. Thank you for your consideration and for the opportunity to share this information with the council.
Thank you very much, and you guys do a great job. I think most all of us are at your holiday concert and absolutely love it. I know, I think this past weekend, there was a conflict with the homeless shelter fundraiser, so I think more of us might have been able to attend. But, you do great work. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate your support, and you all made fabulous conductors at the holiday concert. We had a great time.
That's right. All right. Thanks very much. All right. So, that's the last speaker that I have at the moment. We're going to shortly move on to the annual... Or, to the... Yes, the annual report of the Planning Commission. I don't know, Mr. Shields, while our folks are still here, if you have any thoughts either on the Rollins parking situation, or anything additional to add to Lee Street and South Oak, while our folks are still here, but either on how you might get together, when you might be able to get together, what kind of next steps for both groups might be available to them while they're all gathered here?
So, first, on the Rollins Street parking situation. We'll follow up with you after this meeting, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. For the South Lee and South Oak Street, I think the key thing is, we will work with you on getting to solutions. We do have a process for this, and so I ask you to help us work through that process together. But, we get it. We hear what you're saying, that you're looking for results, as opposed to a whole lot of process, and we understand that, and we'll try to work with you on that.
Yes. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, several years ago, there was Safe Roots to Schools funding. Does that funding still exist?
As a grant program?
And could that be used for this, if it does still exist?
There is the possibility to apply for Safe Roots to School grant funding. It's pretty constrained and has a match requirement. So, neighborhood traffic calming is a much more flexible adaptive response, but it is an option as well.
Mr. Snyder, then Ms. Hardy.
Thanks very much. I wonder, Mr. City Manager, if we could have periodic reports about how we're doing with the South Oak and South Lee project. So, I'm very interested in moving forward as quickly as we can. Secondly, I think it's important for our citizens to know that in addition to the funding, which we're upping on a regular basis and putting various things in the CIP, and working on particular issues that come up, and we're hearing a similar thing from Nolan and other areas around the city, in addition to working on those, we're also working in Richmond to try to get approval to lower the speed limit from 25 miles an hour to 15 miles an hour, something that I think we all support and are working to try to get through the legislature. Another safety measure we're trying to get through the legislature are speed cameras. Other states permit automatic speed enforcement in addition to enforcement by officers. That's been a very tough fight in Virginia. There are no guarantees on that one. Sometimes takes progress to reverse years of inaction in Richmond. In addition, we're also looking regionally for transportation funding available from both Virginia sources, federal sources, and regional sources. So, we're active across this area. We realize these are challenges all across the city, but you've made a particularly strong case, and so, we're going to be working on this case. But, understand as well that we're working on this in a larger context to give ourselves more tools to effectively combat this epidemic, if you will, of just out-of-control bad behavior on the part of motorists. So, I just wanted you to be aware of the larger picture in which we're also trying to operate, as well as being responsive and the follow-up that we will do with our city staff on how we're doing on your project.
Ms. Hardy, then Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thank you. So, first of all, to the neighborhood, thank you for coming out again. I know this is actually the second time you all have come out to address this concern. So, my question, actually, to city staff, is it shouldn't take neighborhoods needing to come out twice to ask for this, especially since in 2010, we didn't address it. So, I know that we have some near-term actions with increasing police enforcement and administrative actions. If I recall correctly, from the last budget amendment and the current... If I recall correctly, from the last budget amendment and the current budget that we have allocated for traffic calming, South Lee and South Oak is not getting any allocation. So does this mean they have to wait for the next fiscal year, so in other words, July, for any formal funding for traffic calming? And then the second part of that question is, for the near-term actions, do we have enough budget and staff to take care of those administrative actions?
For the near term, yes, we have enough staff, and we're working that plus the six other projects that are ready to go to construction come spring. But so some of the signage and the administrative stuff, we can do with the current funding allocation. Any large construction project, like a sidewalk, and possibly some speed humps for tables, if that's the community consensus, may have to wait for FY 21.
So four months from now?
But there's stuff we'll be able to do.
So the proposal of that three-way stop sign plus a crosswalk, can that be done administratively, or does that require until July 1st, till FY 21?
Under the adopted policies for NTC, that requires community consensus and sign-off and not staff administrative work. Whether it can fit into the budget will be a bit of working through the costs that we spend for the ones that we already identified for you. If those cost estimates come under our estimates, then we could have funding to do crosswalks. Some things, like the three-way stop, will require a small amount of study, because VDOT requires a warrant study, so we have an engineer base. So we'll start that piece. We've already, as I indicated in my email, started, have collected the traffic data. Now we're looking at that. Some of that will allow us to clean up some of the signs. Staff have actually already been out on site to Saint Lee, to South Lee, to look at some of the street signs that need cleanup. And we're reaching out to the South Oak community, because they didn't return the petition, and so we're making sure they understand the process, so we can bring these two NTC projects together to look at holistically, as you heard from the citizens.
Yeah, so if we have the budget and the staff, I would encourage us to push hard on those administrative actions, because I certainly don't want this neighborhood to come out a third time, and we certainly don't want another accident on the street either. So let council know if there's more staff or funding, because I think you certainly have receptive ears up here. Thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you. Thank you to the neighbors that came out and spoke, again, on this matter. I will say it as plainly as I can, because I addressed this over work session. Frankly, there's no excuse for not having implemented some of these light solutions already. Some of these things have been talked about, at least since I've been on council, and that's been two years, and that's two years too long. And having to go through this even more than once over a 10-year period, when it's obvious that some of these solutions could be implemented, there is just no excuse, and frankly, I find it shameful. We have the resources, we have the money, it just requires people to take action. So I am certainly sympathetic and empathetic. I live on Seaton Lane, my kids walk to school, and I've seen some of those challenges, and frankly, that was my primary walking path to get to council meetings, is to walk up South Lee. But it is incredibly dangerous at night, and even dangerous during the day in broad daylight. So I want to thank you guys for coming out, and I would tell you that you've certainly got my full support, and there's no reason that we can't effect some of this change for some of these lighter solutions in the near term. And then I have a request for staff, that for a number of these projects that are either in study period or we're taking action, I would like to see some type of written documentation that shows a timeline and status of where these projects are, so we can keep track of them. I feel like we've had a lot of these conversations that are out there. I know that somebody's keeping track of this, but I would like to see some type of written document, as well as a regular report on the status of these projects.
All right. Thank you very much. As you heard, I think the city council has a commitment to traffic calming, traffic safety, and we're very sympathetic and want to work as quickly as we can to find solutions, not only for your street, but throughout our community. So thank you all for coming out. We're going to now move on to the next item of the agenda, which is the annual report of the Planning Commission. You're welcome to stay, if you'd like. It looks like most of you don't want to, but I'm sure you'll be watching at home. So thank you for that. Mr. Rankin is coming up right now to give us the annual report of the Planning Commission. Thank you, and welcome.
I won't take it personally. I will say, though, I live on Little Falls near West Columbia, and we have a similar situation, and a few years ago, we did get a three-way stop sign. That has been very helpful. That was pretty easy to do, and we're one of the projects that just got funded to get a bump out with a crosswalk and improved sidewalk. So I know Jeff Sykes is doing ours, I think he's going to work on yours. Hopefully, that will, he'll have a good starting point, so good luck. All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Connolly, and the rest of city council for allowing me to present the Planning Commission's annual report for 2019. First, I'd like to report that at the beginning of the year, my fellow planning commissioners elected me as chairman, and this is the first time I've served in this capacity, and therefore the first time I'm presenting this report to you. I want to thank Russ Wodisca, who served as chairman for the three previous years, doing a truly outstanding job guiding us through what I think most of us recognize as an unprecedented period of growth and development for our city. Thankfully, Russ remains a member of the Planning Commission, and I'm hopeful that with his mentorship and the assistance of our vice chair Brett Krasner, I'll be able to maintain the high standards and expectations established under Russ's watch. Last year, the Planning Commission saw a couple of notable changes. A longtime planning commissioner and former vice mayor Lindy Hockenberry retired from the commission, and Cory Weiss joined to fill Lindy's spot. Obviously, we miss Lindy's tremendous experience and knowledge of all things related to Falls Church, but I'm happy to report that Ms. Weiss has been an excellent addition and is already having an impact on our work, especially as it relates to environmental issues. We also saw the retirement of Deborah G., who served as our clerk for many, many years, well before I joined the commission in 2013. As with Lindy, Deborah's vast experience was irreplaceable, but thankfully, our new clerk, Emily Basemore, has done a great job filling some big shoes. In terms of the nuts and bolts of our annual report, which I think you have as part of your packet, we had 22 regular meetings in 2019, as well as 29 work sessions. We continued with our recent speaker series tradition and hosted four speakers last year covering topics like mobility and affordable housing. Of course, over those 22 meetings and 29 work sessions, we covered lots of issues from special exceptions to site plans, to subdivisions, to comprehensive plan updates, and I won't go into all of them tonight, but that said, I'll touch on some highlights. We looked at the Oak Street Bridge design, and that review is notable mostly because it's not often that we get to review a bridge in the city. But I mention it mostly because it touches on a theme we seem to be in the middle of right now, which is one of updating infrastructure throughout the city, some of which, like this bridge, which really hasn't been thought of for decades. But probably the biggest thing we have going on in the city right now is all the work up at the high school site. Last year, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special exception entitlement submitted by Falls Church Gateway Partners for the West Falls Church Development Project. As you know, that project continues to move forward, and this year, you'll be dealing with the special exception site plan. Normally, the Planning Commission takes the lead on site plan review, but the new process being used for this project shifts that over to you on city council. While I wish you good luck with that, I also want to say that the Planning Commission is happy to assist with the site plan review and recommendations as needed, so just let us know. In terms of the comprehensive plan, we worked on both the demographics chapter, as well as the housing chapter, and the demographics chapter provided a lot of good data that influenced the housing chapter and will impact other chapters in the comp plan as well. And considering the challenges the city and the region face regarding housing, I think it was important and hopefully valuable that we were able to get both of those chapters updated last year. We worked through several issues with the site plan for the library renovation project, hopefully getting it to a good spot. I know there's been a lot of back and forth related to the cost of that project, but it looks like everything is full speed ahead at this point. And finally, we were involved in a variety of aspects related to the construction of the new high school, the most significant being the review of the Phase 1 site plan. As you guys know, this is a fast-moving, complex project with a lot going on, so we worked hard to efficiently address the important aspects of the first phase of the site plan, and we hope to do the same for the second phase, which will be coming up later this year. In terms of looking forward, in January, we established our priorities for the coming year, which are included in the report. Obviously, we continue to focus on the west end. It's very important, helping get the high school construction wrapped up, as well as keeping the economic development portion on track. We've also started work on the small area plan for that part of the city, which also includes the Gordon Road Triangle. We're hoping to update two chapters of the comprehensive plan, the facilities and utilities chapter, which we've already got started on, as well as the community character, appearance, and design chapter later in the year. And actually, when I was looking at it, I realized we have also done work on the natural resources chapter, which I think is close to being done, that maybe is off for you guys to look at. We also want to look, take a look at pedestrian connectivity and missing links in order to keep pushing for a more walkable city. In the area of zoning and land use map updates, I know you've spent a little time looking at the Greenway Downs overlay issue, and one way or another, we'd like to put that to rest this year, either by getting you to adopt it or formally declining it. It's been something on our to-do list for quite a while, and I know we have some answers to get back to you on that. We're also taking a look at the Cottage Housing Pilot Program, with the goal of making recommendations for what changes we'd like to see if the program is made permanent. And partially inspired by some recent challenging subdivision requests, we want to start taking a look at some of the single-family development regulations. I think in addition to improving the code to make it clear, we also want to see whether or not there are changes that could help us in our efforts to diversify the housing options in the city. Finally, we will continue to focus on the impact of climate change and what we need to do in order to be more prepared. For example, the current CIP that we have just sent our recommendation to you on contains projects related to stormwater management that will be developed in the coming months and years. And as you'll see in our CIP recommendation, we want to make sure green infrastructure strategies are included in those plans, not just because they have a better environmental result, but because in many cases, they are more cost-effective than traditional strategies alone for dealing with stormwater. I'll wrap up with a couple of quick comments about the CIP, which Assistant City Manager Mester did an outstanding job pulling together, as always. First, we included a note with our recommendation to approve the CIP that we need to make sure there is sufficient staff time available to implement the projects as planned. In the past couple of years, the city has done a good job of ramping up on project management capabilities needed to implement the CIP, and now we need to make sure other aspects of the CIP execution are supported, specifically making sure we have the capacity to go after, win, and manage the grants needed to fund many of the projects. And second, and I know city council has been working on this, I think it's important that when we have CIP projects that don't go as planned, as we've seen with the city hall and library renovations, we don't shy away from digging in and learning what went wrong, so we can avoid similar mistakes in the future. On the Planning Commission, we care a lot about planning, and we put a lot of thought and energy into the CIP, which is often a tightly configured package of projects without any wiggle room. So when something goes off the track this badly, it can be discouraging. It looks like in this case, we might be able to sufficiently navigate the situation, but had some things not worked out in our favor, we could have been facing some really big challenges as a result of the problems with these projects. So I encourage you to continue to work with staff to really understand what went wrong, so we can all do better in the future. And speaking of staff, I want to close with a quick acknowledgement of the planning director, Paul Stoddart, and the entire planning staff. I think they've done a really outstanding job this year, juggling many priorities, and I look forward to another productive year working with them. Thank you. The end.
All right. Thank you. I know it's not the end, it's just the beginning.
The end of my comments.
But we appreciate your great work. I think the Planning Commission has had probably the most productive and frankly busy time in certainly recent history with all the things going on. You guys have done a great job of helping us power through, so it's much appreciated. Any questions for Mr. Rankin? Ms. Hardy?
One question and one just comment, so thank you. We appreciate you being great partners with us. I personally will take you up on your offer to help us review site plan, because we've never done that before. One question on dual trails. So we received a letter, as I did, I believe you guys did as well, about feedback on dual trails and some, I guess, I don't know whether council officially needs to take any action on it, or if it's strictly in the Planning Commission, but I know we certainly have an interest, because we've talked about it for so long. What's the next step there? What's your take on the, I think the letter, which essentially says, I think there's too, we're overdoing it, maybe?
Yeah. I don't know for sure the next step. We had a presentation a month or two ago that was at only 30% design or something, not as far along as you might think, but they said at the time, you know, it's like a lot of things, tight budget, not a lot of options to, it seemed like they're trying to be pretty consistent throughout the whole thing, and not say, hey, this area doesn't need this, we don't worry about it. But I have heard from some people who live on the trail, and I've urged staff throughout that process to make sure we are communicating with the people that own property or live adjacent to the trail. Many of those people have used what is essentially parkland as part of their backyard, and I think it's completely appropriate for the public to get full use of that. However, not all those people know about this project, and I'm worried that once they find out, it'll be a little bit too late for them to weigh in. I know specifically, the comments I've heard are that the trail design is such to handle stormwater issues, which are an issue at points along the trail, but the people I've heard from say, hey, it's not a problem here, and I'm worried actually implementing this here may create stormwater problems for my yard. I don't know the specifics of that, but I do think we need to do more outreach. But I don't think there's tons of, I know there's not really any budget to do anything too creative, but I don't know if staff would do more, but...
Well, in general, I'm a fan of trying to address the stormwater issues while we're digging up all that land anyway to put dual trails in.
Yeah.
Let's just make sure the money's in the right place and we're addressing where there are actually issues, and we take a holistic look across the whole trail, so we don't create a whack-a-mole issue where you solve one here and create another problem there.
I know the trail crossing project is farther along in design, although I think that is one of the projects where we lack the staff to implement at a normal pace, so...
Great. And then last question on, kind of as a preview for the CIP for us. I know we talked about undergoing a lot of infrastructure updates. Do you think with the pace of things in the CIP that we are taking on too much, whether things are appropriately spread out across the plan? I think, given some issues that we had recently, I think it merits kind of a pause to figure out, you know, are we too ambitious?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the CIP is tough, because there's not a lot of funding in there right now. I mean, there's a lot of normal transportation stuff that gets funded different ways, but with the high school and stuff like, and the city hall and the library are already set up, the main newish thing is stormwater stuff, which a lot of what's in the CIP right now is sort of placeholder, because the working group, whatever it's called, is going to hopefully help guide the solutions. But I do think that is, I don't think we're trying to do too much. We may have too much in the CIP for the, like I mentioned, the staff to handle some aspects of it. I think if we had staff, and Cindy can speak to this, but if we had staff available to get all the grants going, I think it's doable, because a lot of the CIP actual money is tied up in things that we're already doing with the schools and the library.
One of the things that we talked with the Planning Commission about, and we're working through the budget process now, is the pinch point that Mr. Rankin's referring to is usually the procurement grant management piece, because a lot of the money's federal, and that's a much more complex procurement process. And so we're looking at, just like we charge project managers and infield inspections to CIP projects, charging more of that administrative procurement piece to the projects, so we can bring on resources, particularly for the federal procurement process. So we're looking at how to take the Planning Commission's motion and recommendation and make it actionable. Similar to the NTC, when we brought you that $400,000 budget amendment request, we included money in there to be able to have field inspection, so we can move the projects along.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We know we've seen more of you, and we've got a busy year ahead, so thank you for your leadership.
I think we do have a lot coming up this year. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Okay, let's move on to our next report, which is the annual report of the Housing Commission. Come on down, welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Joshua Shakur, I'm a commissioner for the Housing Commission. And unfortunately, you don't have a PowerPoint, just me, and I guess a Word document, or PDF. So first off, I just want to address that the Housing Commission is aware of and supports the recent additional budget items or funding for certain programs for the housing budget. Those programs are the rental assistance payments, one additional household for low-income housing program, city housing education program and outreach, rent relief program expansion, city rental grant program, local voucher program, and city school employees' housing program, providing security deposit or closing cost assistance. So then going into the Housing Commission's annual report, I'll go ahead and read the chair's letter for you, see if I have it. Okay, so I am pleased to report that the commission continues to serve our community by addressing the broad range of housing issues affecting the city. Members have worked alongside housing staff to fulfill the commission's goals with emphasis on the following areas: maintaining awareness of affordable housing needs and opportunities, proposing housing policy initiatives, serving as a vehicle for landlord-tenant conflict mediation, and protecting the availability of affordable housing in the city. I would like to acknowledge the contributions of each commissioner, and on behalf of the entire commission, sincerely thank the city council for the opportunity to enrich the quality life of our community. So over the past three years, we've began honoring past housing leaders in the city. So over the past three years, we've began honoring past housing leaders in the city through a award that we named after Steven Sprague. He was one of the Commission's most beloved and respected members. So we wanted to pay tribute to him and all the hard work that residents have done throughout the years. So most recent, the last two years, we have honored Christopher Fay of Homestretch and Julio Odrobo, one of the former Housing Commission Chairs in the City of Falls Church. Most recently, we have three new members to the Housing Commission. That'd be Jordan Hicks, Pete Davis, and me. Other member currently is Brenda Heffernan, and she is the most recent Chair of the Housing Commission. So as of April of this year, we'll be celebrating one year of occupancy for the Miller House, a project on Washington Street, which houses several individuals with disabilities in the city who are able to live independently. And so also, we have been working and assisting on new projects, such as Founder's Row and the West Falls Church Development. We have took leadership in ensuring the Founder's Row proposal will incorporate 23 rental affordable units for low to moderate incomes. The Commission, in collaboration with the City Council and Planning Commission liaisons, also recommended a cash contribution in lieu of additional units in accordance with the city's affordable housing policy, living policy. The Commission, so for the Consolidated Plan, Action Plan, Comprehensive Plan, we were able to complete those. The Commission assisted city staff in preparation of the Consolidated Plan, with which the United City Department of Housing and Urban Development requires. Finally, the City Council approved the Housing Chapter of the City Comprehensive Plan, which received critical input from the Commission, highlighting the loss of affordable housing stock from 470 units to 287 in only seven years. The Housing Commission also participated in Community Development Block Grant, Week and Fair Housing Month, the Annual Housing Expo, and facilitation of relationships with landlords and tenants. So in review, you know, there are two, like, there are two or three recommendations. So through our Housing Commission discussions, several priorities have been identified to address the lack of affordable housing in the City of Falls Church, namely allocating funds to the Affordable Housing Fund, revise local ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units, and prioritize affordable dwelling units in negotiation voluntary concessions with multifamily market rate developers. Not only has the city lost 183 housing units in the past seven years, but an additional 120 committed affordable units will be lost in the next eight years due to expiring affordability restrictions or covenants, including the Fields, 96-unit development, which has affordability restrictions due to expire as early as 2026 due to their Lytec expiration, which has affordable housing in Falls Church is to impose affordability restrictions for a standard period of time or in perpetuity, which the city has recently done. The City of Falls Church Affordable Living Policy recommends that all new multifamily developments set aside 6% of units as income-restricted affordable units, even developments set aside 6% of units as income-restricted units, sorry, even as 6% is set aside, which is not mandatory, will not replace the loss of housing stock, let alone keep up with the increased demand. The Council, in negotiating voluntary concessions with developers, should prioritize additional units above 6%, I'd say 10%, with an emphasis on two-bedroom or three-bedroom units. This housing crisis is a call for action. The Housing Commission believes the foregoing proposals are minimum steps that are highly achievable and will meaningfully address the most pressing issues of housing affordability facing the city. We urge the City Council to act decisively and boldly before it's too late. In summary, the Commission remains committed to advocating for housing in the City of Falls Church that is affordable to low and moderate income families. Through the strength, expertise, knowledge, and commitment of the members of the Commission and support of the City Council, we are confident the city will take affirmative action to ensure that our community will provide a diversity of housing options, economic possibilities for all. Thank you very much for allowing me to present the Housing Commission annual report.
All right. Well, thank you for the fine work you and your Commission do. We greatly appreciate it and understand it's one of the most important issues of the day. I mentioned, maybe some of my colleagues might have a question or two for you, if you don't mind hanging around for a moment or two. Are there any folks who have questions or comments? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So I've had the pleasure of being your liaison now for the past four years.
Yep.
So this is probably a bit of a softball, but I thought it was important for Council to know about one of the upcoming ideas you all talked about in the most recent Housing Commission meetings. As our demographics change and shift to having more renters, I think the Housing Commission took up a really important topic last week, which was how do we better engage them and be a resource to them? Do you all want to talk about that?
Yeah, so, you know, recently, we've, we had individuals or residents from Merrill House come, and then also from Merrill House or various different properties to bring up issues they've had with landlords. And so we thought an easier way to streamline the process and be more connected, more engaged, and be more informed about what the residents, how residents are doing and with landlord engagement would be to have a email, basically direct email, so that when they could contact us directly, and we could also automatically send them fax, frequently asked questions, answers to all those different things, give them rundown of the different programs. It's more easier so than that, you know, not calling the Housing Department constantly, and they can also be engaged properly and more informed with the residents.
All right. Thank you very much. Other questions? Mr. Duncan?
Just one thought. On page 11, the reference, this is mostly directed, I think, at the City Manager, to the Council's action in 2010 to divert $2 million from the Affordable Housing Fund to the General Fund. And no significant, if any, money has been added back into that.
Yep.
I don't know how, where people are in the community that, you know, as recently as 10 years ago, we had $2 million in an Affordable Housing Fund. And I just would hope going forward that we would have a policy that when we have to, because of conditions that put us under duress, deplete, you know, a fund like that, we restore it. Is there, is there facts here that I don't know?
I could get more information on this, but what the, there was not $2 million in the Affordable Housing Fund. What there was, was an appropriation by the City Council that was planned as a, as a grant slash loan in the amount of $2 million. And the first several years of debt service on that grant was going to be paid for out of the, I think at, I think at that time, it was about $500,000 in the Affordable Housing Fund. So that the, that was part of the financing arrangement. But I think the short answer is it was, there was not $2 million in the Affordable Housing Fund. It was, in fact, an appropriation that the Council was planning to make out of the General Fund with a way to sort of soften the blow to the General Fund by using the Affordable Housing Fund for a number of years.
So is that connected to the Wildon proposal?
Yes, that's correct. That's what I'm speaking of. If there's a different issue that I'm, someone's referencing that's different from that, then I stand corrected, but that's my memory of the Wildon situation.
The Council, as of 2010, intended to do that, and then conditions changed, Council changed, and we really never have kind of gotten back to the position where we would talk about making an investment of that size.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Connelly?
Thanks for that report, Mr. Shakur. Many of us on City Council are very concerned about the state of affordable housing in Falls Church and are really appreciative of the work that you're doing to help us understand and come up with some good ideas to improve it. At the very beginning of your presentation, you mentioned supporting some things. One of them was like a city school down payment program.
Oh, sorry.
And I, there were several at the beginning that I just had not heard of before. Are they proposals for the upcoming budget season?
So I believe they are. Proposal to the upcoming budget season, yes.
Okay, so we'll get a presentation on them eventually.
For the unmet needs. Is that for this budget? Yeah, so this current budget's unmet needs, and you do, we'll get a presentation, or would you like me to?
So they're ideas that are in the unmet needs category?
Yes.
For the upcoming budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I can go into more depth about the programs if you guys would like, or you're good.
That's okay.
All right. Well, listen, thank you so much for your fine work, and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Good night.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Council requests. Are there any Council requests that have not been made? All right, let's move on to the report. Ms. Hardy?
You knew I had requests. On Womata, I think we've gotten some communication about the parking changes. Does staff have an update for us on where we are with that?
That was going to be one of the things we were going to report on tonight.
Okay, so I'll hold off on that one. The dual trails one, so going back to that letter we received, if staff could just follow up and work with the Planning Commission to address those neighbors' concerns. I don't know enough of the details, and it doesn't sound like Council's going to be the approver of whatever plan it is. But I think what I understand that letter's concern is that they support it, but they are concerned that the stormwater work that's being done there is unnecessary, and it really should be redirected closer to the Shadow Walk area. They live kind of further upstream. And one of the members of the Stormwater Task Force lives in that area, so I assume that he's pretty knowledgeable where there's flooding. So I would just ask staff to follow up on that. And then separately, would be great just to get more updates on it about dual trails. If it is indeed coming this summer, it'll be another one of those really disruptive things in the city. So I'd love to know when it's going to start, what are the construction details, is it going to be closed, where are things detouring and rerouting, especially if it's going to happen while school is in session, too. My next request is around preparing for the General Assembly changes. So given that we expect a bunch of legislation to come out, that we will have to figure out, number one, how to incorporate the code, two, how we make changes to be prepared for it, let's think about that now before they adjourn in March. I mean, we have essentially from March to July until the new laws go into effect, but normally, we probably don't have that much work to do. This year probably will be very different, so I want us to make sure that between Ms. McCoskeri and the rest of staff, we are prepared and have that on as a work plan item. And I think that is it for now. Thank you.
Good night. All right. Mr. Duncan?
Just want to acknowledge the fulfillment of a request for the two-hour parking signs on South Maple next door to the Lincoln Project. I noticed that both, both bays of parking are now marked two-hour parking, which discourages residents from camping out there over long and enables the businesses that are on that street to have free parking for their customers. So thank you.
All right. Mr. Shields, your report?
Just two things to report on. So one, I wanted to give the public an update on the library project, which we did discuss a little bit at the work session last week, but I, A, just want the public to be aware that we have executed the contract with Centennial Construction. The library closed last Monday, and we're in the process right now of moving the entire collection over to the temporary quarters at TJ Elementary School or shipping the rest of the collection off for storage during the construction period. We'll be announcing soon our opening date at TJ Elementary School. This is a fairly complicated move just to get that space safe and welcoming for the public, but we anticipate we'll announce that opening date as soon as possible, and we expect it will be in early March. Construction will begin in mid-March on the new library, and it's a 14-month construction process, and so we're looking forward to opening a new library in June of 2021. Later on the agenda for tonight is a library construction oversight committee so that these types of reports and more detailed information on the project is transmitted to the public through that oversight committee in a very open and transparent way, and any issues that come up also will be handled in an open and transparent way. The second thing I want to update the community on is, as noted in the question, relating to the platform repair work at East Falls Church and West Falls Church here adjacent to the city. And in a nutshell, what we've learned since Womata came to Council on February, early February, to brief you on that project, what we've been informed of since that briefing is that the current plan is to close the parking, and in its entirety, around the East Falls Church metro, about a month and a half before that station is closed, and also to take away about 50% of the parking up at West Falls Church metro earlier as well. So that, particularly around East Falls Church, but also around West Falls Church, closing the parking before the station itself is closed has raised concerns about what the impacts will be as commuters look for parking in adjacent neighborhoods. So we are working now to get on top of that issue, and we just want to assure the neighborhoods around that that we're aware of the issue. We just became aware of it, but we're working to, A, press Womata for a better parking plan than what they've announced so far, and to mitigate these impacts around these stations. And two, we will be prepared to assist these neighborhoods with parking enforcement and other law enforcement, just to make sure that rush hour is not chaotic around these stations during that period of time in particular. And so Cindy has been working this issue along with a team of staff, and Cindy, is there anything you want to add to that?
Just a few additional details. We have also been concurrently working on Womata shuttle routes and plans. They will have one that impact, two that impact the city, one coming out of the Vienna Station, the other out of Dunloring to West Falls Church. We feel comfortable with those routes. It's the parking issues that they announced on February 14th with one month's notice that are the issues we're addressing. We have a conference call on Friday with Womata, Fairfax County, and Arlington to follow up on the parking issues, since Dunloring will have no impact, parking impacts during this, and Vienna will only be impacted by 10%. There's some parking capacities, but they need to do some shuttles, looking at maybe their construction workers and the Womata staff and shuttling them in. So those are things we're definitely proactively following up with Womata. And as Mr. Shields said, we do have an internal team, so we can also look at what the parking enforcement, other internal messaging and communication will need to do besides reaching out and strongly messaging it to the Womata staff and in concurrence with Mr. Snyder's assistance to the Virginia Womata Board to make sure they're aware of the planning impacts for this project.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any comments that folks would like to make? Mr. Snyder?
Let me just add that city staff has done a very diplomatic job of laying out the issues. I'll be a little less diplomatic. I corresponded very clearly to the Virginia Metro Board members, and Metro were very unhappy with the way this parking issue was not advertised or discussed with us when they were here, number one. Number two, this whole project is, in my view, questionable to totally shut down a huge portion of the orange line, and yet, despite public and private protests, they're moving forward. I've asked most recently for a cost-benefit analysis of options to determine whether they actually, because the argument is it's more efficient to do this. Well, I'd like to see the proof of that. Those shutdowns, of course, will be major issues for us in the future. As well, the issue of the bike rack at East Falls Church, which has been under construction for at least five years, seems to be an inexcusable capital project boondoggle, so I've raised that with them as well. So we have a number of metro issues, and I'm hoping that in the call that you have, Cindy, with the other jurisdictions, we can get them to be a bit more vocal on some of these issues than they've been so far. I haven't seen much evidence of it, and yet I know they're negatively affected, so.
Based on us raising the issues and proposing three solutions that I shared with Council that Womata needs to do to address the parking loss at our two stations, I've seen an increased dialogue and communication with our county peers to both sides of us.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Unless there's anything else, any other comments on the City Manager's report? Let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
Yes, we have TO 20-03, Ordinance to amend ordinances 1995 and 1996, as previously amended by Ordinance 2003 and Ordinance 2004 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2020 for the General Fund and the capital improvements. for the general fund and the capital improvements program funds.
All right, thanks very much. Before we get on to the substance of the matter, I'd like to read a disclosure. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-03, an amendment to the FY 2020 budget. My wife's an employee of the Falls Church City Public School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connolly?
I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-03, a FY 2020 budget amendment. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, let's move on to staff. Ms. Bobo, are you leading the charge on this item?
Mayor, I think I will. I'll just walk through the slides very briefly. So what's before council for first reading is a budget amendment, which on its face is a very simple budget amendment, but there's a long story behind it. What we're asking for is for the appropriation of, if you could go to the next slide. We're asking for an appropriation of $1,207,000 to cover change orders associated with closing out the HIT contract for the construction of the City Hall project. As the council will recall, the original construction contract for the City Hall project is $13,350,000, and that was approved prior to issuing the notice to proceed and executing the guaranteed maximum price with HIT construction. Over the course of the construction, with a 70-year-old building and plans that were not as fully vetted as they should have been, we have changes that have been totaling $1,207,000, so that the total contract for HIT construction for the City Hall project will be $14,557,000. So that, in a nutshell, is the budget amendment that is requested for first reading tonight. The, I've passed out to the council just a list of summary of the changes that are associated with this request, and they are, it's a very long list of change orders, and so what is provided is really just a summary of those. But they relate to the configuration of the IT networking for this building, for the low-voltage security systems and lock systems, for change orders associated with the design of the Sallyport and the garage, conditions that were discovered during the demolition of the older building relating to masonry and the elevators, and that sort of thing. The, we can discuss those in more detail if council desires. I will note that this number of $1,207,000 is the result of negotiations with HIT Contracting. If council will, as council knows, this was a construction management at-risk project, and so a good deal of the negotiations that have occurred over the past several months on settling with this number relate to that construction manager at-risk portion of it, which element of the planned changes were the construction manager's responsibility and which are the owner's responsibility. I do want to publicly thank HIT Contracting for its work on resolving those issues and that collaboration. And I will state also that HIT has absorbed a significant amount of the costs that are, in addition to that $1,207,000, and I think it is in the spirit of good faith that those negotiations were conducted in a desire to close this out in a way that was satisfactory to both parties. On the next slide, I would note some of the total roll-up numbers, because in addition to the $1,207,000 that we're asking for as an appropriation, over the life of this project, city staff and working through issues as they came up with this project has been absorbing changes within our operating budgets over FY 18, FY 19, and the current fiscal year. And those absorptions in our budget total $1,67,732. So taken together, over the, really now, the 12-year history of the planning and execution of the City Hall project, the actual expenditures have totaled to $20,378,000. Some of the things that have been absorbed are the city charges staff time to projects. That is a policy change that we made actually in FY 2008, 2009, before the original budget for this project, and that totals $481,000, includes the permitting for the work that are charges really directly to the city for the project. The total in changes for low voltage and building security, $350,000. The additional rent for the temporary locations, $60,000. Moving and storage costs, $81,000. And we do have final closeout work that's being done for this room, for the clerk of courts space, and the sheriff's space, and those total $95,000. And with that, that really will be the last of the dollars that will be spent on the City Hall project. But we did want to provide those numbers just for full, a full accounting of the project, and the council had requested that, and the public deserves to know it. The last slide, Cindy, if we could go to that. So in sum, the budget amendment really has two parts. The payment of the $1,207,000, and then an allocation to capital reserves of $1,971,211. That allocation of capital reserves comes from the way that the high school was financed, which did result in some funding in the current fiscal year to do these things. We just note that with the obligations that the city has undertaken, notably with the high school, with the library, and with this project, the city takes its capital reserves very seriously. Those capital reserves really are the cornerstone for how we would plan to shave the peak off of our debt service, particularly for the high school project, to make that project affordable. And so this allocation of funds, essentially of money that would be going to the capital reserves had it not been for these change orders and these budget overages, is a serious action, and we make this recommendation, understanding of the seriousness of that request. So that's the end of the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
All right, any questions or comments from council? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So with the last $95,000, what is the date when City Hall will be fully functional? Meaning, everyone's moved back in, courts resume here?
The closeout of the final work by HIT will be done in mid-March. Those are changes related to the HVAC systems and the, you know, how those systems are intended to work. And then the work for this room and the sheriff's room, that will be done no later than mid-May. And with that, then, the project will be closed out.
So do we have a target date when courts resume here?
We do. We don't have the exact date, but the month of May is when we intend to have court back in this building.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. So I voted for this project primarily because of its safety elements, and yet those elements have remained unreal, fully fulfilled. And we just heard now that it's not going to be until May, and the police, I think, moved in here some months late, and then the judges are still not happy with things, and I understand the court clerk even has some issues. So I'm pretty concerned about, in my view, this project was driven by the safety issues, and those safety issues are only now being dealt with, with overages. And then I had asked for, and thank you for providing it tonight, a list of the change orders, and I haven't really had an opportunity to go through them. Also, it's still unclear to me what the internal governance was and the decision-making tree that led to, I guess, incomplete designs, and whether there isn't some professional liability on the part of non-city actors for this. So for all these reasons, I'll abstain from the vote tonight. I want to get some additional information. I feel that I don't have what I need to have to provide appropriate oversight, and for that reason, I don't feel that I can support this. I certainly support the addition of the money into the capital reserves, but I need to know more about the City Hall construction lessons learned. We did discuss that somewhat before, but I need to know more in terms of appropriate oversight as to whether, you know, what is the 1.2? Why are the safety issues taking so long to resolve, considering they were really the driving motivation behind doing the whole project, at least as I understood it? And so I hope to have those questions discussed and answers available to the public. But I just need to know more than I know tonight, and I don't feel that I can play the kind of oversight role that I need to play. So for that reason, I'll be abstaining tonight and asking for additional information before this comes before us again. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Just to go on the record, to say I agree with everything that Dave just said. That's my position, and I couldn't have said any better.
All right, other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
When I first joined council eight years ago, the first thing that I recall vividly, the mayor, not this mayor, but the previous mayor, telling me, telling all of us, was that the condition of our City Hall at that time was so poor that we were at risk of being held in contempt of court for maintaining an unsafe workplace for the courts to do their business. I took that fairly seriously, because I didn't quite know what being in contempt of court meant, but it sounded like jail to me. And I didn't really want to spend my first few months of council service in the pokey. My question is, as we've gone through this process, our communications with the courts have, you know, sustained. Is there anything that suggests that the situation that we face now is anything other than just taking care of issues that are outstanding but that are not any kind of a fatal flaw in the final functioning of the building? Do the courts seem satisfied generally with where we're going and the plans to add enhanced security, which has become necessary over the course of the last eight years, frankly?
Yes, I think so. The judges have asked for a couple of discreet things, and they relate to the doors and things like that, and their quarters. And those are, they're on order, they're being done right now, and I think they're satisfied with those. In terms of the governance of the project, you know, for each of the spaces, we did have a sign-off process, and that included the judicial users of this space. And when the project was completed, there were some additional requirements that were brought to our attention, and we're now executing those. But the, there was that initial design process. If I were to make a criticism of the architect, it would be that the way that the users were walked through the plans and had those plans explained to them, whether there was enough time and patience so that they really understood what they were signing off of, I think that is a criticism, because obviously, when you have your users, and like a judge who can really order things, if they have not, if they come back later with a requirement for additional changes to the space, which are expensive after the project is complete, obviously, there was something wrong with the process if they didn't really understand exactly what it is they were signing off on. And that, and I'm singling out the judicial users of this space, but that's, I think that's true for every user of this space, where there's, were changes later, a lot of them related to the fact that, you know, once there was understood what that design change meant and the functionality of the space, the users were coming forward and saying, "We really do need to change this." And we didn't accommodate all the requests for changes, but obviously, we did to the tune of what the budget request is tonight.
Okay, thank you. I mean, you know, again, when I started here, I felt like we had already exhausted the patience of our friends with the courts. And, you know, we were at least two years into a discussion of what we were going to do about City Hall, and I could not see any sign that we were making forward progress at this time, eight years ago. I personally took about a year to try the idea of building a new building altogether, mostly for the reasons that came out as we worked on the current building, found surprises that we didn't know about. Couldn't get four votes to do that. Couldn't get four votes to do anything. So we went with a project, which is the project that we have now, supervised by a person who had at least two other jobs, if not two and a half. I think we scrimped and saved, and as you said, we've gone through the years taking resources from our operating budget as we go through. And, you know, we've learned some lessons that you shared with us last week, is relate to the library, things that we will do differently on the library than we did with City Hall. So that's, that's good. It's a learning process we've gone through. So anyway, for those reasons, I plan to vote for this. I'd like to make a motion accordingly.
Are you making a motion, or you just want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading TO 20-03, schedule second reading, public hearing from March 9, 2020, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I want to open this matter up to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Are there other comments from city council? I've got a few. I got to say, it is disappointing to come after all we've been through and see another request for $1.2 million, and I understand that it's difficult doing a renovation, but I have to say, we have a lot ahead of us still. You know, the school isn't completed, you know, we don't know what the economy is going to be like a year or two from now. We have a lot of needs. We hear about them on a weekly basis, on traffic calming and storm sewer. And so really, we have to be very smart with our money and very efficient with our money. And I hate to see $1.2 million that could have gone, for example, to traffic calming or something else. And so the past is the past, but I don't want to repeat mistakes. And I would like to see the money that we're not putting in reserves be put in reserves in subsequent budget, because I don't think this is a good policy at all, to just sort of take money out of our reserves when we need to plug holes or fill gaps or whatever. So my hope would be that our coming budget or budgets, we can find a way to take the money we're spending here and not putting in reserves and find a way to go ahead and do that. But anyways, that's what I've got to say. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Sorry, I did have comments. So I will just echo and agree that with what the mayor said and what Mr. Snyder said. So I can't support this tonight. I think I acknowledge that, I appreciate the candor from staff and the transparency and the full accounting that I previously requested, and really owning the issues, acknowledgement that this didn't go well, I think is really important. And I think tonight, we, and actually, the second reading, we're not going to have real options to plug this, which doesn't put us in a really great spot. Half of it, we've already spent, and the other $95,000, we needed to finish City Hall. So I think it doesn't put council in a great place when there's no real alternatives other than using it. So I don't like that. But my vote not supporting it tonight, I think it really is a reflection of, number one, my dissatisfaction with the way the process has gone. Along the way, we should have been told fully in open session about the issues along the way and not at the end about, well, we had issues here, we had issues there. Second, following up on what the mayor said, I think the use of reserves is just bad financial practice. I think we continue to plug capital project issues with reserves when we clearly have more pressing citizen concerns, and I worry that we are doing it at the risk of other operating needs, clearly like traffic calming, that we continue to hear every session. So I cannot support this tonight, but I realize and appreciate that people have been very candid, at least with the issues, and hopefully learn from it going forward.
Are there other comments?
I mean, the bottom line is this money has essentially, I wouldn't say been spent, but if we do not support this motion tonight, we are going to be in litigation, I presume, over this fund. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
So essentially, this money's been spent. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure what choice we really have. You can make a statement about it, but the bottom line is the city as a whole essentially has a liability for this money. Is that fair to say?
That is correct.
All right.
And I will just say this, and I say this very seriously. The question was asked two weeks ago, who is accountable for projects that are run by the city? And the answer is the city manager is. I'm responsible for this. We have a project manager, that project manager reports to me. I provided oversight of that project manager. And so I understand the dissatisfaction over this. We worked very hard to get this resolved in a manner that protected the taxpayers to the best extent possible, but this is, this is what the bill is at this point.
Are there other comments? I mean, as much as I am not satisfied or not happy with this, I'm not sure there's much alternative, at least from my perspective, to going forward with this. Otherwise, the city gets sued for this amount and we end up in litigation forever, it sounds like. All right, we've got a motion on the table and Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Abstain.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you.
All right, let's keep moving. So the next item on the agenda.
I actually believe the item you added, the resolution to create a library construction oversight committee, which is TR 20-09, would go here.
All right, let's put it here. Anything to say, Mr. Shields? I know this is what we discussed previously. I'm not sure there's a whole lot to add to it, is there?
There isn't. This was discussed at work session. The intent is that the normal project management oversight action, activity that would happen, this is going to formalize that and really step up the transparency of any issues that come up over the course of the library project. That's the intent.
All right. Do we need to appoint city council representatives at this time?
This would establish it. If the council was ready to make those appointments, that would be welcome. If council wants to do that at a later date, that's an option as well.
So Mr. Lichtenhouse is nodding his head the wrong way. So do we want to put that off another time or do we want to select two people quickly to be on this board?
Well, Mayor, I think that since we've awarded the contract and closed the library, if we don't move out quickly on this, that won't ever gain our back footing, so.
All right, you want to be one of the people then, one of the council representatives?
I do.
All right, we got, we need a second. Anyone else want to be on this task force?
As the new library board liaison, I guess that'll be approved next. I can do it, but I'm going to be in library board meetings. I'm happy to do it if need be.
I would welcome the participation of Vice Mayor.
Mr. Snyder?
If somebody needs an alternate, I'm willing to participate. I've got a lot of other things on my plate, but I'm willing to play a role if it helps.
All right, so I think we got our lineup here, Mr. Shields, if that's okay.
But I have, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
About the formation of the committee because it lists two library board members and a resident of the city. So the resident of the city, will that person have to go through the whole, the appointments committee process, right? Yes, Ms. Heath or?
Yeah, that's the intent.
Right, so it would need to be advertised in the month of March and then we wouldn't actually be able to appoint someone until April?
Yeah, and if that's the case, what I would envision is that this committee will be stood up and meeting in advance of this member joining. I think the intent is to have, there are people in the community that have extensive construction experience. It'd be useful to have such an individual on this committee if one steps forward.
That's correct. That's my understanding as well.
So we could start meeting prior.
Right, and if somebody would like to write an ad, we can get that up March 1st and run that for applications.
Okay.
Give us the details and we'll get a good ad out.
All right, sounds good. I don't know if I've opened this up to the public. If not, I'm opening it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none? We have, I believe, do we have a motion on the table yet?
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah, sure.
So the library board and the planning commission are also going, who's going to ask them to nominate people to be on this committee?
We will do that by, through Paul Stoudt, the planning director, and what we anticipate is the planning commission will discuss it and send their representative.
I have reps from the, from the library board. I know who they are.
All right, we can probably figure some of this offline with staff and the like. All right, so do we have a motion yet?
I move to adopt here 20-09. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Was that Mr. Snyder on the second?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yep.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove any item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item 1A.
1A, okay. All right, other than that, is there any request to remove any items? All right, so do we need to read these items, city attorney? Or can we just move to adopt the items, save for item 1A?
You can move to adopt them.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the items except for item 1A?
I move to adopt the consent agenda except for item 1A.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any member of the public wish to speak to these matters, seeing none, the matter's closed to the public. We have a motion on the table. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. We have one item that has been-
Can we get a vote on that? I'm sorry, it's going to the circuit court.
Okay. All right, go ahead, go for it.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yep.
Thank you, seven to zero passes.
All right, let's move on to the item that's been pulled from the agenda, which is item 1A for discussion. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the appointments committee for its work. As my colleagues know, it's moderately unusual for an incumbent member of a board or commission who is interested in being reappointed to not be reappointed. I would just like to let everyone know that I chatted today online with Mr. Sandoz, who has been an outstanding member of an outstanding organization, the EDA. And John said, I agree with the need for member diversity as expressed by the appointments committee. I'm sure Aaron will bring new perspectives to the EDA that make its advice to council helpful in addressing the city's future development challenges. I just wanted to put that on the record. I appreciate Mr. Sandoz stepping aside for Aaron Messner, who is an outstanding small business operator here in the city, and I'm happy to support her nomination to the EDA. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. I know Mr. Sandoz has had great contributions to the city and I'm sure that was a very difficult recommendation by the appointments committee that you all, I'm sure wrestled quite hard with, so thank you to him and I hope we'll have a chance to maybe honor his contributions to the city in the near future.
It was difficult. We've also offered other opportunities to him because we definitely have needs on other boards that I think would benefit from his expertise.
All right, do we have a motion regarding item 1A?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Aaron Messner, the Economic Development Authority.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none, the matter's closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, it looks like that's all the items on the regular agenda. We're now going to have technically at least a work session. Are we intending to move to a different portion of the room, i.e. the table there? We're going to stay up here? What's the plan?
I think the easiest thing would be just stay there at the desk.
All right, let's move on then to our work session item.
And can I just note for the council, we are having a work session tonight in the interest of canceling your work session on March 2nd. By consolidating this work session tonight, I think that is the good news, that that agenda's been kept clear.
That's good. And we may, as I've mentioned, and I think we all know, we may be having a joint meeting or we should be having a joint meeting scheduled in the near future with Arlington County and Alexandria City. And so that can take the place of one of our canceled meetings, but we are intending to have a regional get together with them to discuss issues of common interest. Let's move on now to our work session item and Madam Clerk, will you call that item?
Sure. We have TR 19-45, Resolution to Adopt the West End Small Area Plan as a Guiding Document in Decision Making for Planning, Zoning, and Development Review: Capital Improvements, City Regulations, and Policies.
All right, thank you very much. Let's keep on moving.
So Ms. Shaina Schaefer will give the staff report for this, and this really is just to provide an update to the city council on this area plan. And we are on the verge of sending it out to all the city's boards and commissions for their comment with the intention of then getting those back and have this back before council in the summer. But we wanted to touch base with council before, so you know what we are sending out to board and commission for them to comment on.
All right, Ms. Schaefer, thank you. I know it's a lot of work going into this, this report or this plan, so thanks very much and what you got for us?
So the request before council tonight is to review and provide feedback on the draft West End Small Area Plan. Specifically, staff is looking for input on the questions raised in lines six to eight of the staff report. Are the draft vision statement and goals compelling and responsive to community needs? Are there additional elements or issues that should be included in the plan and what are council strategies and action priorities? And as was mentioned by Mr. Shields, staff is also looking for council to concur on taking the draft plan out to the city's boards and commissions for further refinement and development of the plan. The draft plan, chapters one and two, were presented to the city council on December 9th as part of a joint work session with Economic Development Authority and the Planning Commission. And there's a summary of comments and staff responses from that joint work session and that is in lines 13 to 21 of attachment two. Any changes that have been made to those first two chapters are shown in blue text in attachment one, which is the draft plan. And then following that joint work session, staff worked on drafting the remaining chapters of the small area plan and then presented that plan to the planning commission on February 18th. At this time, staff has not responded or addressed those comments, but will be looking to do that after this work session tonight. And so the planning commission comments are summarized, beginning in lines 26 of the staff report. Overall, staff had a very positive work session with the planning commission, got a lot of good feedback on areas of the plan that could be clarified and improved upon. But a couple of things to highlight for the council to consider tonight, comments related to the Gordon Road Triangle, planning commission was questioning whether that area should be shown as an area for industrial use. I know that was a topic that council had raised during the December 9th work session, so looking to talk through that again tonight. And then there was also a comment from the planning commission about the uncertainty of the economic viability of data centers. That was another topic that was brought up at the December 9th work session. And so there was some concern from the planning commission over the emphasis that was in the draft plan. Another item, not included specifically in this staff report, but that I just wanted to raise from comments during the joint work session with the EDA, planning commission, and council on the 9th, was that there was a member of the EDA that recommended zoning revisions in order to enable some by right capability for residential use, whether or not that is something that council would desire to be included in the plan. That's something that hasn't been incorporated into the plan at that stage, but something that staff is looking for further direction from council on. In terms of timing, there's the work session tonight. The plan provided council concurs would be to take the plan out to boards and commissions over March to April and then work towards a June action. And so that's all I had. There was a PowerPoint in the package, but overall, it's generally the same presentation as was given at the December 9th work session. I'm happy to go through that, but if it's better use of time to just go through the draft plan, that works for me as well.
All right, thank you very much. Very nice job, very thorough. What comments do we have from council? Do we have folks who have some comments? Ms. Hardy, then Mr. Snyder?
Great. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Thank you for being responsive to our feedback last time and sharing with us where planning commission was. I just have two comments. One is actually in response to Jim Snyder, who had sent around a presentation from a NAOP luncheon a couple of weeks ago. And I think in there, there was an annual forecast about where office demand and supply is. And there was a pretty stark contrast between metro approximate locations in terms of vacancy rates versus everywhere else. So pretty much if you were within half a mile of metro, you saw really low vacancy rates. Everywhere else, including Fairfax County, saw 18 to 20-plus percent. And so given that the Gordon Road Triangle, everything in this kind of west end that we're talking about, is within half a mile of West Falls Church, how can we put a bigger emphasis on the office market? So as we get further into the plan, talking about envisioned uses, I think office needs to be a bigger part of it. I think as we, hopefully, Amazon takes up the vacant office space in Arlington, hopefully that means the rest of northern region will do better, but I'd love to see that emphasized more, especially if that's what market trends show us. My second, which I think is already acknowledged in there, is I want to make sure that it's reflected that I would love to see a near term kind of safe routes to school as it relates to biking. I think it's already called out in there that we need a long-term connection from the WOD to West Falls Church Metro. And I know we have a grant along Shreve Road to better connect that, but I think in the near term, kids are still going to school. They don't have a great way to get there between where the WOD stops off or using Shreve Road. So whether it's working with federal realty, because I know there's a letter in there with kind of their near term or two-phase redevelopment plans, it's discussed. I would love for staff to put some attention on what can we do in the next zero to six months to actually promote better walking, pedestrian and bike facilities, getting to the high school and getting to metro. Because I do think with metro shutdown, especially this summer, we're going to allot more people that's not going to be driving and we'll need alternative ways to get there safely. So if we can catalyze on the discussions with federal on how to use the back part of their property before they invest a whole bunch in their facelift, I think that's called in their phase one, I think it would be terrific for us to work with them on.
Mr. Snyder?
So one of the things that I'd like to see in this plan is what is our net economic return we want from this area in order, the minimum needed to support the school project and other things that we want to do? I don't, I see pictures and maps, but I don't see what's our economic target. So I'm interested in at least some discussion about what that would be as a minimum or as a floor or however we want to describe it. And I mean net, I don't mean gross, but I mean net of all public service costs. The second thing I don't see is really much originality, like a major entertainment or something that will draw significant numbers of people to that area once developed. You know, we obviously need to handle the traffic elements of it, but I really, it would be great if we could really reach out, whether it be something like the museum or whether it be, I mean, another idea I had some years ago was a National Teacher Hall of Fame where every year you present things or National Media Award Center that would bring people here, that would honor, but would be supporting a museum or something that would really bring people here on either a regular basis or a periodic basis. So that's the kind of thing that I'm sort of interested in, on the far end of creativity, which I don't really see here right now, and the possibility of pursuing those kinds of things. And on the, sort of the hardcore economic, what do we really need this area to generate? And that should help us make the decisions about what we approve. So thanks very much.
All right, other comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. Just looking at the comments here included in the staff report, I just wanted to address a couple, a couple of things as it relates to economic development. It was a little dismayed that the idea that we want to remove the conversation of data centers altogether from any type of mixed-use project, I think that there's, and not to go too far down the rabbit hole, because the data centers that we think about today that litter the landscape of Loudoun County and Prince William County are not the data centers of tomorrow. And so I think the conversation about data centers and what it means in terms of technology[1773.47] terms of technology and infrastructure needs to be reframed. And as opposed to just outright saying that it should be removed, maybe it, maybe it should just be described in a different way. I look at, one, data centers, there is no greater net fiscal positive for a city from a commercial real estate asset perspective than a data center. Data centers are changing dramatically. They're not these huge concrete boxes, and that'll continue to change. And any type of, you know, whether we're talking about an entrepreneurial technology zone, or we're just talking about advancements in technology and smart cities, those data centers are going to be shrinking, and they're going to be coming closer to the end user. And so I don't want to rule those out completely. I think that there is a place. But I think when folks think about data centers, they just think about these massive concrete boxes. And that's, that's not the future, and that's not what needs to be dismissed outright, if that's what people are thinking. So take that for what it's worth. But I don't think that we should be, just like we shouldn't be prescriptively determining what could be there in 20 to 50 years, we also should not be removing things which could be an integral part and is certainly a trend. Also, one of the thing, I had the pleasure of speaking with Andrew Painter at the George Mason University Masters in Real Estate Development Class that Bob Wolf teaches. And we were talking specifically about this west end project, just giving different perspectives. Andrew is a land use attorney, and my role here accounts on working in commercial real estate. And the, the class there is working on a case study for the Gordon Road Triangle. Effectively, what, what could be, what could replace the city yard, what that would look like, and how that might be incorporated into some future development. The reason I mention that is that, that we ended up having this 30 to 45-minute conversation about, we, we throw the word gateway around a lot here in the city, the western gateway and the eastern gateway. And we started to have this conversation about almost a gateway to the WOD trail. And that, having a development in the Gordon Road Triangle that is inviting to people that are using that mode of transportation, and there's some great images in here and discussions about breweries in Asheville and other places like that. And so I would just encourage, as part of this, to think about at least that Gordon Road Triangle piece and all the investments that we're making in the WOD trail, that we are planning for a development that contemplates that being a much bigger part of the picture. Because if you think about the way the Gordon Road Triangle is situated as it relates to WOD, and you think about the, the increase in, in usage and volume on that trail, it would be a huge missed opportunity for us not to plan for us to create some type of inviting gateway to folks that are using that on a regular basis. So I don't think industrial use is the future, at least of that area. I look at it as something that could be incredibly unique and could incorporate things like technology and innovation, small office space, it's entrepreneurial, small pockets for data centers that are, that are driving that type of thing. So just a really unique mix, but also again capitalizing on that, on that frontage of the WOD. So just those two things specifically. But I do appreciate the, the work here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other folks? Mr. Z?
Thanks, Mayor. The 2-7, when you talk about greenways, I think you should expand that a little bit more to include green landscaping. So greenways by itself is assisted and complemented by green landscaping. Say a little bit more about that. Also on 2-8, where we talk about district energy, I think the time for district energy in this build-out has, has come and gone. The whole concept of district energy would be if this were, say, a college situated near a cornfield in Iowa. Yeah, we're not. Or whatever, however, I would replace that with the energy reliability and the storage, because it's clearly future. So you can say something about chemical storage. When Dominion gives us four electric school buses, it's not, because they're just being kind heart of people. The 2,000 school buses are going to provide for all of Virginia. They're going to become part of a very important peak power energy storage mechanism, where when the buses aren't being driven, it happens to coincide with the use for air conditioning. So that, all these buses can be plugged in, and they're going to be feeding back into the grid. So stuff like that. So you might amp up 2.9. Talk to, talk to Dominion about some of their ideas. They've got their sprint team, and they've got some ideas that they could probably off, off shed, shed off on this, put that in there. And honestly, it's kind of a, maybe a minor point here, but when you talk about net zero energy ready, I'm not sure that USQ actually certifies them, but they just provide some guidelines. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you for all these edits and responsiveness. In response to your questions, are the draft vision statement and goals compelling and responsive to community needs? Might, I appreciate that you put live, work, play, learn in the goals, but I feel like the actual presence of the school campus that has well over 1,000 students there every day needs to be in that vision. So either as a sentence, the Foster City Public School Secondary Campus is a key part of this, or a key element of the west end. I feel like that needs to be in there a little more specifically. And I agree with Ms. Hardy about the safe routes to school, that we need to work that in, in as many ways as possible. And there can be a route from, on the Shreve side, and also a route through the federal realty property as much as possible. And then if you go ahead to page 4-9, and I know on this one you were emphasizing some of the, this is also related to the school. The gym in the high school that we all saw on our tour this weekend is a competition gym. This is the first time the city has had a competition gym. So in addition to having recreational space for students to access on sport fields, there's also the opportunity to host state tournaments in the gym and bring in economic development that way. And then you have a little bit in here about Virginia Tech and additional academic opportunities. I think because that campus is going to redevelop, you should also include the economic development opportunities of the students at the Virginia Tech campus, as well as staff and living arrangements, that there's going to be a lot more people living next door related to the Virginia Tech campus. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duncan, then Mr. Lipton House again.
Sorry. Just two quick thoughts. One, I'm sure you're doing this, but Mr. Painter's letter at the end of the packet expresses, you know, federal realty's thoughts, hopes, maybe, for the site. Obviously, we want them to be involved in every stage of the deliberations, and hope they'll attend the public meetings and hear what folks have to say. Same goes for the buyer group, which will play an important role on the other side of things. Second thought is that it's another chance to take a crack at an aquatic center. Mr. Snyder spoke about basically some kind of destination activity. I think it's a great idea. You know, one of those destinations could be a sports aquatic complex. So I'm not sure if that's indicated anywhere in here, but I would like to at least throw that into the mix as an amenity that would, as the vice mayor said, bring people here who are involved in fitness and competitions and so forth in, in the water. Thanks.
Mr. Lipton House?
Yeah. Just touching on that letter, but a more broader concept on the west end, and just making sure that we're being very conscientious about the connectivity between the roads and the intersections, whether it's Gordon and Birch. And then there's conversation, at least in that letter, about the alignment of the major ingress and egress roads in the, in the west end project currently, and then surrounding sites. So I think we just need to be very, very careful in making sure that we're paying attention to how, how these streets are aligning for future development in areas, so we create as much vibrancy and I would say kind of cross, cross-traffic between different developments that'll benefit that entire area.
All right. I've got a couple of quick comments. One, I think it's section 6.4, talks about sidewalk widths of 10 feet. I think it ought to be clear widths of 10 feet. And I don't know what's necessarily implied by a 10-foot sidewalk. It didn't really, to my knowledge, specify setbacks. It just had bulk plane angles and things like that. I think we need to specify building setbacks, so people know what they've got to work with for their building sizes. So I would suggest either 20 feet, which we currently have for downtown, or the possibility of enlarging that, but certainly not reducing it. So it could be 20, it could be 22, it could be 24, I don't know what. But I think we need to specify that, so people have an expectation of what they're going to get. But as far as the 10-foot sidewalk reference in section 10.4, or 6.4, I think that ought to be referenced to 10-foot clear sidewalk width, and not a sidewalk width in and of itself. You could actually have presumably a 20-foot wide sidewalk section that has tree pits and landscape furniture, and the actual portion of it that is clear is 10 feet, but the sidewalk itself will be much wider. Secondly, I didn't see much discussion about outdoor seating. To me, that's really important, to enliven outdoor spaces, particularly around these kind of areas. So I would make greater reference to outdoor seating as a desire, potentially a requirement for each site, to at least provide it. I was actually getting a snack when I think you were talking about whether comments were incorporated or not. But I do think, to me, the critical problems with this section of town are, A, it's industrial, B, it's not walkable, it's not bikeable. It's just not a place people want to be. And I think we've got to really focus on streetscape and street grids to break this property, this, break this section up better. And so I think this report, or this plan, needs much more emphasis on a street grid, whether that's sample street grids. And we need to make sure they're done in the right building, the right block size, so that people have viable blocks. But I think we need to improve our street grid here. These sort of super blocks, these 14-acre blocks, they just don't work for, to my, to my mind, for pedestrian scale development. So I think we need to have much more emphasis on that. I think there's a brief mention about street trees, but I think we really need to focus on like a complete street process for this, in terms of these new streets you might create, which could have on-street parking, street trees, street lights, street furniture, appropriate widths, outdoor seating, bike lanes, the whole nine yards, to really transform this area, to make it a desirable place. Let's see what else I've got. We absolutely have to have connectivity with the rest of the city. Right now, I walk my kids there for years, and it's just, you're, you're walking through a car wash, it's got frozen water on it, you're going, you know, dodging people through parking lots. It's not a good walk. It needs to be a good walk for everybody's benefit. Federal realty would benefit by having a nice walkable street frontage. But I think we need to have an absolute emphasis on that, as it relates to the school, but also just for economic development purposes. Let's see what else I've got here. That's probably enough for now. So, I mean, I don't see any other comments. I think maybe you got a little bit more push along. I know there's plenty more work to do, and we understand the magnitude of what you're working on, and greatly appreciate it. So thank you very much. What we've got now on the agenda is some sort of cleanup items, and then we're going to go to closed session. So we've got, I think, two items on closed session. So I hope we can get out of here at a reasonable hour tonight, so just keep that in mind. Is there any business not on the agenda, any standing regional committee or council liaison reports that need to be made quickly?
Not really any of those, but a request for future agenda item is the COVID-19 issues, then whether, how we're addressing those. Thank you.
All right. What else we got? Any council member comments? Okay. We've got minutes. We have three sets of minutes, December 9th, 2019. Mr. Duncan?
The minutes of December 9th, 2019, line 37. I think it's the 250th anniversary of the dedication of the Falls Church, not a Falls Church itself. And, anybody else? With that correction, I move approval of the minutes Monday, December 9th, as amended.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention? All right. Let's move on to January 6, 2020.
On to January 6, line 105. We're going to re-establish, an extra E in the word reestablish. With that correction, move approval of the minutes of January 6, 2020.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. January 13th, 2020.
Me to do Terry. The vice mayor has caught on Monday, January 13th, line 91. It's Terry Rallo. With that correction, move approval of the minutes of Monday, January 13th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Is there anything else to be said here? All right. We are going to go in closed session. Why don't we take a brief break? I'm going to read a motion before we go into closed session, but then we'll take a brief moment for the cameras to come down and reconvene in closed session. Are we convening here, Mr. Shields?
I would recommend we go to the Oak Room, so we can just sit around the table there.
All right. Upon a motion made by council member...
Z.
All right. Z, and seconded by council member...
Hardy.
Connolly. Connolly's got it. And passed by a vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A34, for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19, for the discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cyber security threats or vulnerabilities, and briefing by, by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement, or emergency services, officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related to threat to public safety. Discussion of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 2 of, or 14 of Section 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information, technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or infrastructure, or the safety of such persons using such facility, building, or structure. Does anyone want me to repeat that? Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yep.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. All right. We're going into closed session. 9:55. All right. We are back. We are coming out of closed session. I'm going to read a motion that hopefully will get passed, coming out of closed session. Upon a motion made by council member...
Lipton House.
Seconded by council member...
Hardy.
And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Council member Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder? Not here. Okay. So we've got a not here. Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mr. Tarter? Yep. All right. So let's keep on trucking. What time is it? 11:48?
11:48.
All right. This is our certification. Upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
And seconded by council member...
Lipton House.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder is absent. Z?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. All right. Anything else to be said tonight?
Move adjourned.
Let's do it. We're adjourned.